All right, next one's gonna stay.
John.
Good evening. Welcome to council chambers for the special meeting Monday, November 11th. First item is pledge of allegiance. Dolores, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The attendance?
Counselor J. Couldn't be it with us tonight. Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Kotkin could be with us tonight. Counselor Manousaus?
Here.
Counselor McAllister?
Here.
Counselor Montanari?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Present.
And Chairperson Hammond.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first item that we have on our agenda is an action item, approval of a DUI enforcement grant for the Weathersfield Police Department. Can I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the grant, the DUI grant for the Weathersfield Police Department.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Lady Madam Mayor and Counsel, this is our annual DUI grant for the holiday season. Chief Sutran's here to answer any questions, but it's a pretty routine grant that does a lot of good work over the holidays for DUI enforcement.
Do counselors have any questions of the chief? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Number two is approval of minutes for October 7th, 2013 council meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for October 7th, 2013 town council meeting.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Number three, approval of minutes for the October 21st, 2013 council meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes for the October 21st, 2013 town council meeting.
And a second, thank you. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Number four is recognition of outgoing town council members. Do counselors have any comments?
I guess I'll start, because I'm sure other people will talk.
Counselor?
I just wanted to thank Jim and David for being good partners and making the town a better place over the last four years. I know, we already spoke about Jim last time. And I wish David was here so we could, I would speak a little bit more about him. He's not here, but I think a lot of people know he's done a lot of good things for the town. He, he lost the race by 38 votes. I mean, he wishes he could be here to be on the council again and do better things for the town, but I think, I think he also is good having some time off for a while. That's all.
Any other counselors? Counselor Manousaus?
Sure, go ahead, John.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the residents of town for their support over the past six years. I think I've done a very good job for many, many residents in town. I will continue to speak out for what is right for this town and try to make it a better place to live. It is my home as it is your home. I greatly appreciate the honor of being here for six years, and you haven't seen the last of me. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jim and Dave, and I wish you were here as well. I'd like to thank him first, his service to the town. I know sometimes this can be some thankless work and it takes a lot of time away from, from family and friends, but I hope he's found his time served, and I mean that nicely. Somewhat rewarding to know that he played a vital role in improving the state of our town, leaving it better off than, than when he got here. The one thing, especially with Jim, you know, we've always promised to do with each other was that we would make our experience here as public servants a lot, a lot more enjoyable than it could otherwise be. So it's certainly important work, but if you can find some fun in what you're doing, you'll be much more effective at it, and that goes for anything. I think Jim did this with great results, and even though he lives up the street, I'm gonna miss him and, on council, and I'll, I have the same words for Dave, too, if, if he were here. I'd like to say, too, in, in advance of the new council being sworn in, while we'll miss the outgoing members, I really look forward to the incoming ones, and the incoming counselors. I'm very happy to see some new faces on, on both sides, especially Steve, who I see out there, who I consider a friend growing up in Weathersfield, and of course, Mike Rel and Tony Martino will be great, you know, additions to the team. And, you know, briefly, too, as we looked at the results, we all know it was a, it was a very close, you know, election, and, you know, I've read and that the new majority does promise to reach across the aisle and to, you know, govern by consensus, and we would really welcome that. So hearing that and seeing those election results, I'm sorry, and seeing those, hearing that and seeing the election results, you know, I can't help but think that there's a golden opportunity here for the majority to lead in, in the way they promised, and by electing a mayor and deputy mayor from, from different parties. So I'd urge the new council to seriously consider this option in the best interests of the town, and I wish everybody good luck.
Mayor?
I would like to comment on all the outgoing council members. Regardless of one's politics, I think anyone that takes the time to serve and to run for office and to knock on a bazillion doors and answer questions in the media and from the public and put in the time and effort deserves at least a thank you. So to Jim, I will always, when I think of Jim, I'll always remember the word metrics, because that's really, Jim likes to say that a lot, and he really likes to use metrics a lot. So thank you for your service and bringing metrics to the town of Weathersfield. To Dave Drake, if he was here, I'll always remember his, I think he said this a lot, which was, "No, no, 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 no," especially when I was talking. I don't know why, but it was always, "No, no, 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 no." So he's done a great job. He's served on building committees. He was the vice chair of building committee. He's got countless hours of experience in town, and we'll miss his knowledge. He was a great liaison from the building, from the high school building committee to the, to the council. And also to the deputy mayor, John Consul. I've served with John for many years. We've had some really knock-down, drag-out screaming matches, so it's never been a love fest, but we do respect each other, and he does do what he believes is right for the town. Again, not always agreeing with him, but his heart is in the right place, and he has tried to improve the lives of people in Weathersfield. So thank you for your service, John, and to all three of you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to echo some of those thoughts. Of course, I, we spoke about Jim a little bit at the last meeting, but echoing it again, Jim, great respect for you. I'm sure you'll move on to some other great things, and hopefully it's only a little short-term break for you. David is not here, but I got the pleasure of sitting next to David over the years, side by side, and a lot of quiet kidding between each other that we couldn't share publicly, but he's a, he's a terrific guy, and I also want to mention that he's a neighbor of my mom and dad. My mom passed away this past year, and David was a true friend to my parents, is a neighbor, and a real class guy. We'll respect him for not just that, but all the things that David did. Very talented leader, and I will miss him. I was sorry to see him not make it because of his experience, so wish him well. And John has served as deputy mayor and on this council in a variety of terms. Well, he's an exciting figure, and he's someone that I've seen in many roles. I used to kid him a little bit in some emails about having a Superman cape, because he seemed to be showing up everywhere in town for every problem. But no one had his heart in a better place to try to do the things for our community, and I certainly wish him well. Good luck, John.
Thank you, Paul.
Couple more, and I have some plaques, but Jim, you are the metric guy. I have to agree with Jerry. You really looked and challenged the departments to look for metrics so that you could look at the value that the programs and the departments were providing. We always didn't see eye to eye, but I certainly appreciated your insight. Dave is kind of our engineer with the vision, because he would be way out there, and before you knew it, he was on to the next. But we always appreciated his input and insight. And John, thank you very much
Thank you, John.
for being right next to me and, and helping me with the meetings. Jim, if you can come over, please?
A plaque for you, for appreciation of your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
John, we also have a plaque for you for your service to the community and the council, and as deputy mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Dolores is running the show.
Hey, can I give a call back?
I will say, I need to stay and see.
I'll still say.
I'll come back.
Good luck.
Oh, thanks.
Dolores, I'm taking my side.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, two pins. Okay.
What, you think I could do it for him?
Would you like hot water?
It's not bad.
You know it's hot. Tell him we're ready. He's ready.
Okay, so that'll be good. He'll be here. Do you want to give it, oh, can we have to change the suit? However, people want us to. I don't know.
Tonight?
How he wants to do it, or we can do it tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll just sit where we were then, I guess?
Yeah, because I didn't, yeah.
I'll put these in all the places.
Yeah. Can I just have one? Just send it, I handed out more.
Right now, buddy.
Now, this is your mail.
I got that. I got a cinder.
A cinder card. Have something before you go.
What? Thank you.
Do we have an extra?
What?
We have an extra.
I didn't put mine on.
Oh.
Do we need it?
No, no, no.
I'm not elected.
Yeah, well. Um, I think I'll come around 7:30. We called him, he's on the way. Probably at 8:00.
It'll just be a minute longer. We're waiting for Father Moran to come. Thank you.
I'm moving down here. Sit next to me.
Did I go too fast?
They won't promise our, our pretty ones are going to those chickens, right? Oh, we already told them.
Everybody want to take a seat?
You get them all happy.
Should try it out.
Yep.
Yep. That one's open and that one's.
There. Not tonight.
Yeah, you sit there. All right. Do I just smile? Mike, smile.
Good evening and welcome to the, uh, this evening to convene the organization of the new town council for Weathersfield. According to section three oh four of the charter, the meeting is to administer the oath of office to council members elect and to elect a chairperson and vice chairperson of the council. Will you please stand for the pledge? And Mayor, uh, Mayor Hemmon, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Berry.
Yes.
Counselor Hemmon.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Kotkin is not available tonight. Counselor Manusaus.
Here.
Counselor Martino.
Here.
Counselor Montanari.
Here.
Counselor Row.
Here.
And Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce to you, um, the Reverend James Moran from Incarnation Church. Do a lot of the invocation.
Thank you, Dolores, and good evening, everyone. My congratulations personally to all who are elected. I know everyone enjoys with me in saying we're proud of your service and your willingness to be of service to our town. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, on this Veterans' Day, we remember and cherish the freedom upon which our country is built and honor the sacrifices of those who have given so much to preserve our country and its ideals. In this spirit, we ask a blessing upon the members of our council as they confront the challenges facing our town. Enable them to put aside individual differences and partisanship so that they may come together in a spirit of goodwill and collegiality. May their deliberations lead to discussions that promote a strong and vibrant community, one which strengthens the spiritual, social, civic, and economic well-being of all. And may they always be guided by the spirit of your wisdom and compassion. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Counselors, can you come to the semicircle and we can swear you in? Well, please raise your right hand. Do you Michael Row, Stathman's, uh, Manusaus, Mike Hurley, Donna Hemmon, Paul Montanari, Tony Martino, Jerry Roberts, and Steve Jerry solemnly swear that you will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties of, of, the duties of the office of the council to the town of Weathersfield in the best of your ability to help you there. Please take your seat. The next order of business will be the selection by this council for a chairperson, who under the town charter is also known as the mayor, and I will now entertain nominations. Counselor Roberts.
I'm honored to place the name, I'm honored to place the name of my friend Paul Montanari in nomination for mayor and chairperson of the Weathersfield Town Council. Paul is a lifelong resident of Weathersfield and a graduate of Weathersfield High School, class of nineteen seventy-six. From there, he went on to Saint Michael's College in Vermont and received a master's degree at the University of Vermont, where he met the love of his life, Julie. He also did doctoral work at the University of Maryland. Paul has three passions in life, for those of you that don't know him that well, although they're not necessarily in this order. The three passions are golf, his family, and having the best tan of all of us on the council. During the day, if you call Paul and he doesn't answer the phone immediately, he's on the golf course. Now, golf games are stuff that legends are made of, and this is true with Paul's game also. In all the years I have known him and heard him talking, make that bragging about his game, I have never, ever heard him mention a score. What does that tell you? He's either a terrible golfer or a very modest man. Who knows? However, his incessant golfing does give him the edge in developing the perfect tan by the first week of April. At night, if you call Paul and he doesn't answer immediately, he's doing something with his wonderful family, his wife Julie and his daughters Meredith and Michelle. Paul is unabashed in his love for his family, and he beams with pride when their names are mentioned. He really relishes the role of husband and father. Paul is an entrepreneur and a successful business owner. He has been involved in town government since two thousand and five, when he was first elected to the town council, and he's also served as deputy mayor for one term. Paul has the experience, temperament, and leadership skills needed to be mayor. While on the council, he has served on many committees, including budget and infrastructure. He has also been the liaison to the EDIC committee. Paul truly wants what's best for Weathersfield. He has always been willing to reach across the aisle to build consensus on issues. He will be a collaborative and thoughtful leader, one who listens and gets input before making decisions. I look forward to working with Mayor Paul Montanari.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Just a second.
I'm sorry, second? Sure.
I am honored to second the nomination of Paul Montanari. I knew Jerry would bring out all of Paul's fine points, so I just want to say, years ago, I remember my father telling me stories about his dealing with Paul Montanari's father at the bank and what a gentleman he was to work with. During my career with the town, I've had the pleasure of working with Paul on council issues. They say, like father, like son. I must echo my father's words about Paul being a gentleman to work with. During his tenure in office, he's always done the best to help the residents of Weathersfield and keep Weathersfield moving forward. It's my pleasure to second the nomination of Paul Montanari for mayor.
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare the nomination closed, and we'll have a roll call vote to elect Paul Montanari as the chairperson of the party of the council chambers. Counselor Berry.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Hemmon.
Yes.
Counselor Hurley.
Yes.
Counselor Kotkin is not here. Counselor Manusaus.
Yes.
Counselor Martino.
Yes.
Counselor Montanari.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Row.
Aye.
And Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Thank you. It's an unanimous decision. And now we've.
Wow, it looks different over here. Thank you, and Jerry and Tony, for your nice words, and thank each of you for supporting the vote for that position. It's a true honor. Before I share some words, I want to mention our outgoing mayor, Donna Hemmon. I think it's a fair assessment for me to say that Donna and I have been good friends. We've worked behind the scenes. She's a class act. She's done incredible work for this town. She's probably one of the kindest, most sincere people I know. Filling her shoes will be a big deal. I really care about Donna. Thanks. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your kind words, Paul.
I'd like to present to Donna, our outgoing mayor, the gavel, commemorative gavel with the insignia of Weathersfield on it. She sure deserves it.
Thank you all. This is very nice, and I'll put it in a special place. We've worked hard over the last four years, and I just would like to say we've put some great things into place for the town. We've built a strong financial foundation, and we hope that you'll take that and move on with it and build it even stronger and, and higher. So, thank you, Paul.
Thanks. Before I share a few words, I just want to mention, being that it's Veterans' Day, a word of thanks to all the vets out there, those that are here. One very special one, which I was not expecting, is my dad, who's here today. Dad's been ailing, but he made it. My sister surprised me. Pretty touched. Jeez, if the guys in the trash business saw me crying, they'd rail me right out. Again, thank you, Jerry and Tony, for your kind words, and a special thanks to my colleagues on the Republican side who won reelection. It's a terrific group, and we had quite an election, as all of us saw. Very close, razor sharp. I said in the current, and I think those of you that noticed, my words about, this is not a mandate. It's a, it's a mandate for support and working together and collaboration. The fine work that's been done by this group in the last four years is only going to be continued. I want to share with you, if I could, a few simple visions for Weathersfield that's important, and I think will be shared not only by our newly elected officials at the diocese, but I think our entire community at large and the folks that are here. Our town faces, as you all know, numerous challenges. Our tax base is predominantly residential. Commercial development, as we all know, has been hampered. The physical logistics of Silas Dean and the Berlin Turnpike made it very difficult. Our demographics are changing. It's requiring extra services in our schools, extra services for our seniors as they age. We are in the early stages of a dramatic renovation at our high school. So we come into leadership eager, all of us, to tackle these problems, and we want to welcome all points of view on making those solutions. Three priorities have emerged for me, along with our team, and I suspect they'll be shared by all of us. Economic development, which we all talk about, adequately funding our schools, which drive this community, and preparing a responsible budget. Let me briefly address each one. We will immediately, as a team, with the help of EDIC and a reconvened redevelopment agency, solicit development options for two plaguing properties on our, in our town. We've talked about them for over twenty years, the Fun Zone and Weight Watchers, but I think we have a team of talented leaders sitting at this diocese that have new ideas, and we're going to work harder than ever to make it our priority. We attend this redevelopment to grow our grand list finally, increase our commercial tax base, and invigorate our local community and our economy, and complement the current businesses that exist today. Number two, support for our schools. That's going to be facilitated by a new era of open dialogue, primarily through, but not limited to, the reconvening and an abundant shared services committee. Open communication with all stakeholders is vital, vital, if we are going to improve teaching and learning in our schools. Renovation, as I mentioned, of our flagship high school, it's going to require continued management by the school projects building committee, as well as the oversight and the support of everybody at this diocese. This project represents the next level of educational excellence for which Weathersfield has been so proud. When it comes to developing the town budget, the process will be inclusive and transparent. Our party, our party, must dispel the erroneous impression that we're taxing spend. Our record, the last two years we were majority, is probably the best evidence that we agree to that, a zero percent increase our last year, proof that we have a commitment to responsible budgeting and service that has been demonstrated in the previous administration. At this time, I wish to acknowledge all the volunteers and members of boards and commissions whose commitment to our town we deeply value. We appreciate not only the parent volunteers in schools and the PTOs for their significant contribution to the quality of life of our children, but also just examples, Historic Society, Tourism Commission, EDIC, the Library Board, just some examples of what our town has become such a gem because of the volunteers that, that serve us. Finally, if there's one message I heard loud and clear on the campaign trail from our community, from our friends across the aisle, our community is tired of partisan politics. It's aggravating to behold gridlock in Washington. It's even more exasperating to see it happen at our municipal level. As your new mayor, I pledge to continue my efforts at bipartisanship and seek the same commitment from every leader that sits at this diocese. I have every confidence that's going to happen because our community is going to pull together. We have the new perspective of a gentleman named Mike Row. I saw Mike today at the Veterans' Fair with his daughter at his side, holding his hand, looking up at him. You only have to see that to know he's a good man and a good dad. We've got Mike Hurley's low-key style and demeanor and consistent effort. Stathi's competitive spirit. We all know Stathi and I have had some challenges together, but I deeply respect him, and I value his opinion. He'll know I'll reach out to him. And then we have Donna's reasonableness and experience and talent, one of my dearest friends up at this diocese. On our side, we have the newly elected Tony Martino, who will be the council's liaison to EDIC. He'll bring dozens of years of experience with fiscal management and talent. Jerry Roberts, one of the finest individuals to serve in this community, will head up shared services. Additionally, her longstanding commitment to public safety, after all, she is married to a police chief, makes her an ideal leader. I think I've mentioned this before, she was just elected as the first woman president of the Hundred Club, a proud achievement that demonstrates her talents. Jeff Kotkin's not here, but everybody knows his expertise in energy savings, insurance, and finance make him a natural leader for budget and finance. Newly elected Steve Berry will serve as a liaison to the school projects committee, extending his commitment to education and excellence. In all of these endeavors, we will rely on our capable town and board staff to complete our input and our recommendations. I trust, as you heard what I've just said, that you have our endorsement for a vision, and you share it with me for a revitalized Weathersfield, where the fiscal needs of our residents are balanced with the educational needs of our school and the town services that we've come to enjoy. I want to thank each of you for being here. I want to thank this, this diocese for voting and supporting the leadership that's going to go forward together as a team. Let's roll up our sleeves. Let's park our egos. Let's get to work. Thank you. My first task, and I'm fumbling. We'd like to take nominations for deputy mayor. Tony?
I am honored to place into nomination for deputy mayor a lifelong resident of Weathersfield, Steve Berry. I first met Steve two years ago, when his son Matthew received the Unico Brian Piccolo Award. Since that time, I followed Steve's work on the high school building committee. Steve has been active in coaching soccer in town and is a C.C. director at Corpus Christi Church. Steve has a can-do attitude and wants to give back to the town he grew up in. He lives up to the values he was taught about the importance of volunteering. It is my pleasure to nominate Steve Berry for deputy mayor.
Thank you, Tony. It's truly my pleasure to second the nomination for Steve Berry as deputy mayor for our town. Thank you Tony. It's truly my pleasure to second the nomination for Steve Berry as deputy mayor for our town. A lifelong resident of Weathersfield, as Tony just mentioned, I've had the good fortune to know his parents and his siblings. We actually grew up next to each other, my sister and I, back in the 60s and 70s. Steve represents for me that rare combination of what I like to call the new breed of politicians that brings common sense, balance, and progressive thought to government. He's married to Lee who's here. He also impressed us that she was on the phones down Election Day. So, welcome aboard Lee. You don't know what you're in for. He has three sons, Matthew, Michael, and Brendan, a couple of Irish names, I think. They got their good looks fortunately from their mother. And they also work the phones on Election Day. So, a coach, a leader, CCD teacher. Steve is a really impressive guy. I must tell you, as the newest member of our candidate pool, Steve was tireless. He knocked on more doors, called more people, burned more soul than anybody in our team. And I usually work pretty hard. He's distinguished our party with his energy. His support from the community confirms what we all saw, a talented emerging leader in our town. I believe his dad would agree that he picked up a few things from the lineage. Steve's a Holy Cross grad and academic environment I respect because he used to kick our butts in school. Please join me in welcoming Steve as our deputy mayor and vote for him. I think together, we're going to make a pretty good team. Thank you Steve. We're going to go to a vote, right? So, do you call the names, Delores?
I will.
Go ahead.
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Hurley?
Yes.
Counselor Manusows?
Yes.
Counselor Martino?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Rell?
Hi.
Counselor Berry?
Yes.
And Mayor Montanari?
Yes.
Thank you. We have eight votes. Unanimous. Thank you.
Steve, you're going to say a few words, I hope.
Sure.
It's your chance.
I, folks who don't know me, I think you'll get to know me. I will probably be briefed this evening and I probably will be throughout the remainder of my career on the council. I truly am proud and humbled by the opportunity to serve the people of Weathersfield. I think as I've said on the campaign trail, I grew up here, I love this town, and I am honored to give back to the town. It really is an honor. I thank Paul and congratulate Paul. He will be a great mayor and I really look forward to working with you as we move forward. And I share your vision and I echo what your vision is for this community. I also thank the confidence of my fellow counselors. I appreciate, and again, I'm humbled by that honor as well. I really just want to thank a few people. I want to thank my father who has been an inspiration and an example for me throughout my whole life and most importantly, he has shown me the importance of public service and giving back to the community. He is truly an exceptional person and I'm proud to be his son. And he has been a true gentleman and a great person. I want to thank my family, my wife Leah, my son Matt, who can't be here, he's at school, Mike and Brendan, who have worked hard on the campaign trail with me. And I really, again, I am proud of all of you and I can't thank you enough. I also thank all the folks who worked hard on this campaign. It really, again, was a collaborative and a group effort on both sides. And it was a spirited campaign and I can't thank you all enough. One thing I have to say, and I agree with Paul, as we walked door to door, the one thing that has to strike all of us is a feeling of distrust of politics and politicians. And that is something that I know every person at this table comes here with the right intentions and wanting to do the right thing for the right reasons. I know that and I believe that. I am willing to work in a bipartisan fashion. The town of Weathersfield deserves that, expects that, and I am confident that all of us will do that together. It's time to get to work. We've got a lot to do. But I am confident we will all be able to do that moving forward in a responsible and a bipartisan way and make this town proud. So, thank you.
We have one agenda item that'll be brief. The high school renovation project building committee wants to do a brief presentation to us. So, I think they're here to do that.
Christine here?
Maybe we can do the benediction?
Do the benediction.
Okay, we're going to move to the benediction. Father?
Thank you. Father, we thank you for the spirit of public service demonstrated by those who tonight have accepted their positions of responsibility and leadership. Help them to make positive and constructive efforts based on the best of ethical and moral values to strengthen and promote the welfare of all of our town citizens. We ask all of this confident of your love, care, and concern for all of your people. Amen.
Amen. Just bear with us for one minute for the renovation committee. And we do have afterwards, we have some refreshments in the conference room. We ask that you stay and please enjoy that. Thank you so much for coming. We'll be brief with the renovation committee. Thank you.
As a lead into what you're going to hear tonight, I think what we're going to ask for, because of the timeframe we're under for remediation, we're going to ask for a special meeting on the 21st. So, we can approve the remediation bids and get the contractor prepared for the Christmas break to remediate a portion of the building. So, that's the requested outcome and Steve can probably talk more to that than I could.
No, you've done fine.
While we're waiting for the renovation committee, take a minute for any counselor comments. Counselors?
Sure, I'll comment.
Go ahead Mike.
Somebody has to comment.
Absolutely.
I just want to congratulate all the fellow councilmen and women who were elected. I've already worked with many of them. I want to congratulate especially Mike Rell. He was our highest vote getter in town this time. He was the first time running, which was very nice. Steve Berry, my neighbor, maybe not a lot of you know, but we live three houses away from each other. So, we'll probably be talking to each other a lot. And Tony, welcome aboard.
Mike? Thank you. Congratulations Mayor Montanari and Deputy Mayor Berry. It is an honor to serve with both of you and with the entire council. I wish us all the best of luck in the months ahead. I would like to first thank our veterans who are with us tonight, especially our own, Tony Martino. I saw you there today and you did tell me 25 years with the National Guard. Thank you. And thank you Mr. Montanari as well, as a veteran, for coming tonight. With your service to our country, tonight would not be possible. Thank you. I'd also like to thank my family and those who have supported me through my long days of meeting the community that I am proud to serve and represent. I am honored to hold a seat on this well-respected council. I will keep our community's best interest in mind with every topic, issue, and proposal that is discussed by this body. I am proud to be serving the citizens of this great town and I am humbled by your support. Thank you.
Thank you Mike. Counselor Martino?
I want to thank the residents of Weathersfield giving me this opportunity to serve on the town council. I live by the motto, "Service Above Self." This town has been good to me, providing a place for my sons to get a great education and provide me with a career. I look forward to giving back to you through the knowledge I've gained working with the residents during my 17-year career with the town. To my fellow counselors, I was the staff liaison to the town hall renovation committee and I just want to tell you something that Joe Coombe said the first night of the meeting that the committee met. And that was, he told the other members of the committee, "They all got their positions through their political parties." He told them that when they walked into the room to start business, leave politics at the door and do what is best for the taxpayers of Weathersfield. Counselors, we were elected by the residents because our views to perform for the service to the taxpayers. When we walk into the council chamber or any other room for a meeting, please let us all leave our political agendas at the door and let's work together to do best for the people of Weathersfield. Thank you.
Thank you Tony. Counselors? Stop.
Just want to reiterate what I said before. Congratulations to all the incoming new counselors. I'm looking forward to really working with everybody and I think we can continue what we started over the last four years and I hope we'll do well altogether. Thank you.
Thank you Stop. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to turn it over to the members of the building committee.
We've got one slide.
Good evening. Congratulations to everyone here this evening. The building committee certainly looks forward to working with this new council. We have an update for you this evening on the project. We also want to share some information with you about asbestos abatement that will be taking place over the holiday break. So, we're going to figure out the technology here and do that for you. But first, I will ask our construction managers to come forward and speak with you about the project. Can you hear me okay? Okay, very good. Rob and Laurel?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laurel Purcell with ONG Industries. I'm the pre-construction manager and Rob Martinati here is the project manager. Rob is the onsite person that you would see on a daily basis. We also have two other additional field staff onsite. Just to give you an overview of where we are with the project, again, it's a $74.8 million renovation addition project. We have begun construction onsite. We started with some additions. Next week, is it, you're going to see steel?
The 25th.
25th of November, you'll start to see steel for the new gym addition. And they're also starting with the media center addition. So, work is well underway with the site work and the additions of what's going on. What we're doing now is we're out to bid for the rest of the project and we have a staggering of bids coming in. And the reason that we're doing the staggering is because we've really run out of time to get some work done. We have to get some abatement done while school is not in session this holiday period. And there's a lot of approvals that need to go through with EPA, plans that have to be put into place. So, we have the bid for just the demo and the abatement contractor coming in November 19th. And we're going to ask for you to have a special meeting to approve that contract on Thursday, November 21st. So, we just wanted to give you a heads up with that, but just that bid will be in at that particular moment in time. We then also have two more bids coming in the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. It's the mason and the electrician bid. We need the mason to build a wall of the existing gymnasium. We need that done right away so we can give the gym back to the school for them to use it. So, again, it's work that needs to happen at the tail end of the Christmas holiday and just after that. So, all the rest of the bids, minus those three, all the rest of the bids, and there's 18 trade packages on the street, are due December 5th. So, December 5th is when we'll have all of the numbers in. And the idea is to come back to you on your meeting, your regularly scheduled meeting on the 16th and get to you as many more contractors as we can awarded. I don't know if you have any other meetings after that, so we can get everything done before the holidays or whatever we can't get done by the 16th, we'll have to wait until after the holidays. But just to give you an update of where we are in the project and the criticalness of meeting on the 21st and being at your meeting on the 2nd for those first three trade packages. Did you want to say anything about?
Conservative.
So, that's all that I had. And Carlos Texador is here from Fussin' O'Neill. He's the town's abatement consultant. He'll be with you, Fussin' O'Neill will be with the town for the duration of the project. And he's got a presentation of what areas of the building we're talking about abating over Christmas break so that people know where we're going to be, although the building will be closed.
Yeah, as long as I, I should do it this Saturday.
It's a Saturday again, yeah. Usually, we don't start till 6:30, 4:00, or 7:00. We wait like that. Everything opens at 6:00. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I usually wait till 6:30, 4:00, or 7:00. I see you walk in, then I start.
Yeah, that's fine. We can look at it from camera.
Okay. All right, sorry about that, technical difficulties. So, I guess I'm just going to have to describe it for you. When you are standing in the back of the building and you see the pool to your right and the wrestling room right in front of you and the existing gym, there's two gyms that are back-to-back, behind the big gym, it's Gym A or Gym B, the little, Gym B. That Gym B is going to be converted into locker rooms, so that area will be taken over as well as the team locker rooms and the wrestling rooms, so it's that whole back corner. And where the existing music wing is, where there's existing choral and band, there's asbestos floor tile there. So, that entire area, short of the art rooms on that side of the building where we're building the additions, that will all be contained over Christmas break. So, it's really just two areas of the building that we need to get done in the one-week time period. It's about 12,000 square feet. Approximately 10,000 to 12,000 square feet.
Counselors have any questions about that?
Could you send us the sheet instead of?
Yes, it's a plan, yeah. It's one drawing.
Have it go through Jeff into our website information, so.
Absolutely.
Yep, go ahead, Jeff.
There's going to be a public information portion of that EPA plan, right? So, I noticed Superintendent Emmett is putting together a mailer for all the parents on what's going to happen, and there'll be a containment area, and maybe you can talk a little bit about that, and then what happens at the end of Christmas break to get people back in the building.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me out tonight. Just to let you know, as part of the process with abatement, we needed to provide the EPA with a memo that stated what our communication process would be. We're taking a multimodal approach, using our website, utilizing the media, both print media as well as news media. We're also reaching out to parents through our website, through our renovate Weathersfield High School Facebook page, as well as a letter that will be sent home via mail. Mr. Moore will be utilizing school messenger, utilizing text message, email, as well as a phone call to inform parents as to what's going on. This project is going to be very tight in terms of its time schedule. It will begin on the 20th of December. That is a minimum school day for the district. Students will be leaving at 12:12 p.m. that day and staff shortly thereafter. We'll turn the building over to the contractors at 3 o'clock on that date, and as I have already stated, I know it was in the Hartford Current, the building will be closed to students and staff during the duration of the abatement. So, no parking wreck activities, no sports activities. We've already developed scheduling to move sports teams to other buildings in the district. And what we'll have on is a skeleton staff of custodians, grand total of two. Work will still go on. ONG will still be working in the building while the abatement goes on, but by law, we can have no individuals under the age of 19 in that building. What we'll do with our 12-month staff members, those that choose to work over that vacation, we will relocate them. We have a plan in place already to move them to other buildings as well. What we'll do also is we'll need to make sure we have clean air prior to opening the building on the 2nd of January. We're expecting we're going to get that, but we know it's going to be tight. We'll also be developing alternative plans in the event that we do not get clean air for the high school for a January 2nd opening. Any questions?
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm not going to let the technical thing worry me about the renovation at all, don't worry. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second.
So, all in favor? Refreshments in the back, for those of you who patiently waited, thank you.